We call the meeting to order. All present with the exception of Brenda, who's on an anniversary social. So we will miss her this evening. So would you please stand and place the flag as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda? Someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Katie, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Rebecca and I attended the Hall of Fame recognition together. And we would just like you to be able to see this great event that John Fogerty was referenced and named to. So it's about a seven-minute video exclusively with John on it. I will get out of the way. I can't come that way.
Recipient in the fine arts category is John Fogerty of Cannon Falls. For more than half a century, John Fogerty has been active in the fine arts as a speech and debate coach, one act play director, and as an English, speech, and humanities teacher at Cannon Falls High School. He built a speech program from a grassroots group into an elite-level program. In leading the program, Cannon Falls has had more than 125 medal winners and 14 state champions in speech.
When I started coaching, my goal was to enjoy working with kids, and I always have. Every single day that I've taught, I've enjoyed working with kids. And I never really envisioned anything happening because of it, other than kids get a great opportunity to learn how to speak and to engage the public and do well in college. That's kind of what the goal is for the program.
Fogerty began his teaching career at Cannon Falls in 1969, one year after speech transitioned to a competitive format. He served as head coach until 2009, when he transitioned into the role of an assistant coach. His passion for the fine arts began when his athletic career was short-lived.
I wanted to be a baseball player and got cut, in the last cut, from the baseball squad. So I never actually did that. I played football for a year and then didn't do that anymore. So my career as an athlete was abbreviated. But I really enjoyed some of the other things that the school had to offer. They had a really fine speech team. And they had an excellent drama program and a good newspaper staff. And so I jumped into all of those and really found my niche. I was in the theater for a little while in the college also. Did one black box theater program. I was playing Holden Caulfield in Petcher of the Rye, an adaptation of Petcher of the Rye. And of course, I had to learn how to smoke, because I hadn't smoked yet. And I was onstage smoking. And of course, Holden Caulfield liberally lets loose with a lot of expertise in his book and his production. And I remember the first night going up there at the theater in St. Benedict's and looking out, and the first three rows right in front of me as I was saying all those things were nuns. It was quite an awakening for me. It was a little embarrassing, but I got through that. And I thoroughly enjoyed it and decided I wanted to do that later on. I continued to get an English major going, my speech major.
During the 1996-97 speech season, he was selected Lincoln Douglas Debate Coach of the Year in the region. During the 2005-2007 seasons, he was Minnesota's Coach of the Year by the Minnesota Speech Coaches Association. In 2010, he was one of 12 national coaches honored by the National Federation of State High School Associations. In 2013, he was honored as the Outstanding Individual by the Communication Theater Association of America.
Relentless positivity. He is, every kid he sees, they are going to be the state champion. He sees the potential in everyone. And he is really good at finding the thing that you are good at and asking you to do it. Relentless positivity.
Before he retired to only teaching part-time, he and I were in his room debriefing about our practices afterwards. And this woman comes in with a friend. She goes, "Hi, Mr. Fogerty." And she says, "I don't know if you remember me, but you taught me in like 1971." And she had graduated, become a teacher, and had just retired and came in to say hi while he was there. I have just started having children, of students, show up in my classroom. He's got grandchildren of children in his classroom. It has for many years now. He is literally the thread that holds the fabric of this, you know, that has shaped the fabric of this. And he has taught so many people, literally generations of people on the team, but not only that, but in his classes. And he teaches a debate class, and a lot of them fills in. And he does it in a very unique way. And I don't even know if you can really separate Cannon Falls and John Fogerty with the immense impact that he's had, not only here, but in speeches that have ended up all over the place, universities across the country, job, Twin Cities. It just really is amazing.
For Fogerty, it hasn't been about the trophies.
It's a real subjective definition for me, because it has to do with how many kids have been able to benefit by the program and how much have they been able to benefit from the program. We've got down the hall there, there's a big glass case full of trophies from, you know, all over the place. And I don't often look at them, because that's not where I'm at. I'm much more concerned about seeing those kids be successful and the smiles on their faces and that sort of thing. That, to me, is what success is all about.
Rebecca, you were SPG, weren't you?
Oh, yeah.
He shaped your life.
I think anytime you can share a stage with Joe Mauer, it's pretty impressive.
Well, we talked about it a little bit at the last meeting. We just wanted to share that video with you. So moving on, reports and communication. We have a few people that have spoke. Luke, you were on the facility committee along with Rebecca. Did you have anything to share about your meeting?
Yes, we had our first project oversight committee on the construction that's happening. It was really interesting. We got to meet with the folks that are running that, with ISG and Kraus Anderson. Got to see some preliminary plans, pretty early stages yet, but seems to be on pace. I think they're going to start looking at bids soon. I thought it was interesting. They recently have done a project like what we're doing. So that was good to see some of those examples from that project. And felt, made me feel good about how you've gone down that path already and seems to be on track. I don't know if Rebecca has any more, but.
No.
Okay. Curriculum, WTEC, technology?
Yep, so the curriculum committee met. The social studies department presented textbooks that they would like for us to consider. Pretty much with the exception of AP history, they're all just updated editions of those texts. Some of the textbooks are in pretty rough shape, so really just updating to the newer edition. So we've got some nice intact and nicely bound books for the students. We have a meeting next week where we'll look at the bids and make a recommendation for the board for approval.
It's my first curriculum meeting as an alternate. I showed up, because I've had some questions about standards, and I wasn't really aware of them completely. So Mr. Hodges helped me out as we walked through the procedure for standards. And it meant a lot. There was folks in the audience that I'm sure wanted to hear that information as well. So I found it to be very good. As we progress, we rotate standards and every.
Five to seven years?
You said in theory it's five to seven. Sometimes it drags depending on.
Or somebody decides one curricular area needs standards updated sooner than another.
It was nice to reinforce that. We don't make any decisions on standards. It comes from above, and we just follow the direction of above. Thank you. GCED?
Yep, we had a meeting, we had a special meeting and get called to approve their teaching contracts. And they fell right in line with what ours, with what ours did within the two-point, and I don't have the exact numbers on me. So within two point something first year and then two point something the second. And it was, but when looking at them across the HBL district and across the GCED lines, it was very much in line with all of our classrooms, the way it fell. So it did get approved. And, but that was, that was about it. Their five rivers online is working very well. They have very high enrollment. And so that has been going really well for them. And yeah, that's about it. Did they say, I don't know, the GCED meeting where I attended, they had their first students outside of the sort of GCED space enroll? Did they have any updates on that? They were kind of surprised by that.
No, they didn't have any updates on that. No, just that they have opened it up.
Yeah.
And that was new to me.
I think within like one or two families had already contacted them. So they were really excited.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions? Any other committee reports? Okay, moving down to administrative board reports. It would appear, looking through our agenda, that each one of our administrators has thrown in at least a narrative on where they are and what's been going on for them. I just walked through all of these. The elementary school, Jen isn't with us. Tim, is there anything you'd like to add or reinforce on there?
No, it's all in the report.
Okay. Community ad and activities. You see Reed's got information there. Please refer to that as necessary. Dave, head of operations, you've got information in there. Anything you'd like to add?
Nothing to add, but if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
We may get to that if.
Just back to the activities. Do we know how the adaptive bowling team did today at state?
Reed was up there Friday.
Okay.
And I guess I didn't hear from him today about that. See if we can ever read center and update.
Dave, how did the roof pre-bid meeting go on Friday?
Everything, you know, went pretty standard, no surprises. So now we're just anxiously waiting for bids to come in.
When do they expect that, is it?
The deadline, I believe, I think it was going to be in two weeks after the pre-bid. So relatively soon.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Some reason the 25th rings a bell to me.
Soup report, anything for us?
No, COVID update. We have a meeting this Friday for the COVID committee. We seen a small uptick in cases, primarily in the elementary, but nothing too alarming. Construction update, as Luke mentioned and Rebecca, we did have a PAC committee meeting last week, which is our oversight committee. And we do have a couple of items from that committee that we're going to ask for you to pass tonight in regards to that committee and the bidding that we just talked about as well. In the pack, it also, I put our social media update, our quote-unquote report card. And it looks like we're still doing very well in engagement with the community, which is one of our strategic goals, once we change the direction of our social media. And that seems to be going over very well.
Questions for Jeff? Okay. Consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davis, center?
There's our kind of cash flow sheet and at the top being our bank balances. Kind of the things that are of note to point out as we kind of wrap up the school year and at the same time our fiscal year. Goodyear County, the first half of our property taxes will start coming in next week. We generally don't get the actual loan from the county until usually a day or two before they release those funds. So there are estimates in there. The first portion of that payment at the end of May, the second portion at the beginning of June, you see the two $9,000 payments from Goodyear County. Usually when it was happened, you'll see smaller ideas payments or the payments from the state as they kind of balance out revenue or cash flows to districts. You'll see in the May 30th payroll, a little bit higher payroll than maybe in normal, as that's typically when we pay off spring activities. And then the June 15th payroll, again, a little bit higher, is that's typically when the payroll payoff passes for end of contract. Generally, the teacher side will go out on the June 15th. It seems to get bunched into the fiscal year. On the expenditure side, a couple of things to note as well. We've mentioned about, a few things about the building project coming in. And the bonds were sold and received on May 5th to the district, just under $8 million. As we get the construction kind of plan of when the expenditures and revenues go through, we'll start to divvy out the investments of those funds, since we're not doing the bulk of our construction until next summer. We're able to invest those funds and earn some interest on those. And given inflation and pricing and availability of materials and workers, as much as we can earn, the better. But you do see CCC roof as part of the project that will be done this summer, when Luke was mentioning the pre-bids, how they went, as well as some other expenses you will see for design and costs related to that. We'll have some of those. So as we're able to find out what the draws are, we'll see some expenditures in the cash flow and finance report each month. We won't see that bulk of it until next summer when we're doing those projects. And then finally, some expenditures to kind of note, as we've been talking through some board meetings, of improvements going into the district this summer. There's some work being done in the high school gym and the track surface and the surrounding areas, and all done with LTFM locker facility maintenance funds, energy dollars, donations, some sponsorships, and scoreboards. A lot of things going on for the good of the district and all things that are not in the undesigned fund. There are funds that are designated specifically for these purposes, maintenance of facilities, deferred maintenance items, and those sorts of things, as well as the energy that we've dictated, a large portion of that to go to maintaining the facilities. So you'll see some of those expenditures put in as estimates. Now, they're pretty close, because they've got good quotes on them. But as we get closer to actually paying those loans, you'll see those in the report as well. If you have any questions on this portion of it, I can do my best to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown. Bill, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Public input, comments are welcome from students, residents of the district, taxpayers of the district, people with children in the district, and employees of the district, and must relate to school business and not exceed five minutes. The board cannot engage in a discussion during the comment period, but will take information and find answers if it is appropriate. Due to data privacy concerns, the speaker may not address criticism toward any individual district employee during public input. Individual complaint should be handled privately with billing administrators and/or superintendent. As part of board protocol, it is acceptable. It was unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at a public board meeting. Having read that mouthful, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the district? Jack?
Sure. First off, I want to thank the chairman for that education lesson, as well as superintendent on curriculum and standards. So I went home and printed out the 168 pages for K through nine. Somehow I didn't get the high school curriculum from the draft and started to read that. Gave me a couple of concerns on their methodology of position in it. But I came away with a couple of things. And it seems to me that they put some pretty wide markers. I had a commandant talk about his role with the cadets at the academy just the other day. He says, "Basically, I'm going to tell you the mission. I'm going to give you the right border and the left border." And they're giving you a pretty big right and left border. So what that goes to a conclusion is that I don't know that the standards could be very much of a shield on a textbook selection. And plus, the teachers pointed out that the purpose of the textbook is a tool. So I guess what I came away from the education I got there on standards, a little bit of the reading I did, and then kind of putting it through, is that you guys are really in the driver's seat on the textbooks. And if there's a problem in a textbook and you choose it, you got to take ownership on that. And I regret, I had to plant seeds, so I didn't get to come here on the Friday. So I did not spend the time ahead of time. So I'm not going to be able to tell you if there's something in there that I think is a problem, but I'll be sure to let you know if I find out later, because you know I'll do that for you. I do have one hat out I'd like to share, and it goes to the point about the standards. I hope these individuals are in your phone book. And I hope, and there's one for each of you. If you pass it down, it's contacts for the reps and the senators, because you guys overlap two house districts, I mean, two senate districts. You have students in the old 58 and you have students in 21. So there's six individuals, and they're all in my phone book. I hope they're in yours, because they impact you guys more than they do me, because you're on a board representing all of us, and they affect school. And I can tell you what, the ones on that right side, they know my number and have my name with it. And that might be a good thing or a bad thing, but I talk to them and I communicate to them, and they do respond. So I do hope that they are in your phone book. And next fall, of course, there'll be another election and there could be some new names, and I'll be sure to share those with you. So I come to my last point. And what I heard also in that was the discussion of, there was a school that refused the mask and the closing down, and they lost their funding from the state, from the Department of Education. And I guess I have a question. If there would have been another school district or two join them, and we've learned from the great Bill Gates, that, you know, maybe if we would look back now at what we known, the mask and the closing of the schools might not have been the best strategy in dealing with the disease that impacts the older generation, a very specific group. And we still haven't had a discussion to evaluate that pandemic and what we did right and what we did wrong. I kind of think we've just accepted that we did everything right. And I'm, for one, confident that we did not do everything right. And if we don't have a public discussion on that, we're going to make the same mistake in this institution and others going forward. But the other lesson I learned in that is I got the feeling you guys fear the Department of Education more than you do the taxpayers. And I guess I don't blame you. Well, not only, when you can't even get 20% of the parents that have kids in this school to vote. I mean, that's a problem. And I'm disgusted at my fellow voters, that they don't participate in that. And that's, I don't know if that's on you guys so much as it's on us. But that really disgusts me, that you can't, we can't even get the parents of kids that walk through these halls to say, "Yes, I want to spend more of everyone's money to make this building better," or "I'd like to rein it in." I can tell you, as a taxpayer, I do have strong opinions on it, as most of you have already known and heard and had the disfortune of having that. So I think we got a lot of work to do, and I hope that standards aren't used as a shield too much. Yes, they are a guide, but I think you guys are still in the driver's seat. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak? Mark?
Mark Lund, taxpayer, just to follow up with Jack's comments and also to rebuttal Mr. Breckel's comments. I take offense to him speaking to the public that we don't understand the process for standards. I know for a fact there's a group of parents that submitted comments to the social studies standards that, a lot of that had CRT-type elements in it. And you, as a board, have the authority and the responsibility. You can submit comments to those standards too. So that's a cop-out that you're doing there, Mr. Chairman, to try to assume that you're educating the public. You are not. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Matt Belver, taxpayer in Cannon Falls. I just, I sent an email a couple of weeks ago to Mr. Hodges and Rebecca and Mr. Sampson. Thank you, by the way, for letting us look at the books. I was part of that Friday crew that came in and looked at your proposals on what you want to buy and such. I just, I wanted to, wanted to say, I didn't get my question answered on the email, and I'd like to just bring it up. Maybe it'll come up this meeting or perhaps down the road. But how does a community citizen get on the curriculum committee? It's very clear in the policy that you're encouraged to have two-thirds of the community members part of the curriculum committee. And I'm relatively new to the area, and I, from what I've been told, most of the curriculum committee members are teachers. And so that's not a really real fair representation of the taxpayers, when it's mostly just people that are working here in the district. So if I could get an answer on that, that would be great. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Both public input. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Anyone have any questions or concerns on the consent agenda items as shown? Jeff, you'd like to recognize acceptance of gifts, I know.
Yes, we have one rather large donation come in this month, and it is from our education foundation, from their auction that they held in April. And Cannon Falls Education Foundation will be donating $8,026 to the CTE Department for welding stations for the upcoming project. So we do thank them very much for donating this.
Personnel items. We have one personnel item on here. Rebecca? It's always nice to recognize some of our employees who are retiring.
Sure, I can bring that up.
Sure.
Robin Nelson will be retired effective August 26, 2022. Do you have a number of years off the top of your head?
Not enough.
Not enough? We do want to thank Robin for her years and time and energy that she has put in for the kids and the staff and the community for the district. And she will be missed. So thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
Yes.
We have no old business under new business. Let's approve that first. Can't have, can't have a meeting without Bob messing up something. So anybody have any other questions pertaining to?
I'll second that.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Rebecca, to approve the consent agenda as shown. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. No old business once more. Under new business, we have several issues, staffing issues, and let's get started. Consideration to approve a resignation at the end of the 21-22 school year.
This is Sam Thurman, and I do recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Rebecca. Seconded by Katie. To accept the resignation of Sam Thurman. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor of such, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a retirement at the end of the 21-22 school year.
This is for Sharon Noble. She was a GCED employee, but she will be retiring from her preschool coordinator.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Rebecca. Seconded by Bill. Of the discussion. It's tough to lose long-term employees, and she was an employee of the GCED, but for a long time, she was our employee.
She was our employee.
And she, she was in the confines of our building for the most part as well, correct? We wish her the best. Difficult to lose quality people who are engaged in our community. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the retirement of Sharon Noble? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract at the end of the 21-22 school year.
Yes, this is a probationary non-renewal. It is a resolution, and this is for Joseph Webster.
Look for a motion. What's that?
Do I have to read it?
Motion, second.
I'll make a motion.
Luke on the motion? Second? Second by Katie. Other discussion? Resolution time. Clerk?
Whereas Joseph Webster is a probationary teacher in independent school district number 252, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 252 that pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5 and the district master agreement that the teaching contract of Joseph Webster, a probationary teacher in independent school district number 252, shall be not renewed at the close of the current 2021-2022 school year. Be it further resolved, a written notice be sent to the said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in substantially, substantially the following form.
The letters?
Yep.
So a yes vote would be for the approval of the termination, correct?
Yep. Luke?
Yes.
Katie? Yes. Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes.
Thank you. That passes by a 5-0 vote. Consideration to approve an early return from an extended leave beginning with the 22-23 school year.
This is for Joel Rusted, who went out on leave September 2020, I believe, was the year. By contract and by statute, teachers are supposed to let us go by February 1st if they are going to return for the following year. This came in after February 1st, but it is at the board's discretion. I feel it's necessary because of applicant shortage and obviously with Joel being a valued member of our community and district before, I think it would be recommended to bring Joel back into that position.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Katie? Motion by Katie, seconded by Rebecca. Other discussion?
Just understanding he's fitting into the program as far as moving and all the other list of individuals.
Yeah, he won't go into the high school position. He would slot into an elementary position of a person that's on leave, so he would retain his seniority.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Consideration to approve a one-year, long-term, sub 1.0 full-time educator teaching contract.
The name associated here is Becca Schmullenberg. Recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Rebecca.
I'll second.
Rebecca on the motion. Luke on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a one-year, 1.0 response intervention, full-time teaching contract for 22-23.
The name here is Lily Landry. I recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Rebecca? On the motion? Luke on the second? Other discussion?
Luke and I both graduated with Lily, so it is nice to welcome her back.
Yeah, and it's great to have that position too.
Yeah, it is, using COVID dollars is the reason why it's a one-year, so that everybody understands that. I mean, it was one of the cuts, but we decided it was necessary. It's just to bring that back. It was necessary.
You have a motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 FTE, elementary special ed teaching contract for 22-23.
The name here is Liza Arzwell.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? Arzwell comes from the Canton area.
There's Arzwell's down there. I'm not sure if they're Cantonian. Don't look me on the spotlight.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 full-time high school math teaching contract for 22-23.
The name here is Jasmine Kotek.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca? On the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the math teaching position? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 middle school, high school, business teaching contract for 22-23.
The name here is Michael Walls. Recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Rebecca on the motion? Luke on the second? Other discussion? All in favor of the full-time middle? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 full-time high school science teaching contract for 22-23.
The name here is Danielle Huddy. Recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Katie on the second? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 full-time high school special ed teaching contract for 22-23.
The name here is Elizabeth Evensen. Recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca? On the motion?
I'll second.
Luke on the second? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We did a lot of hires, just in asking. It's, there's a shortage of educators out there.
I didn't like having a finance teacher, math teacher, and a science teacher in the same year. Special ed is top two, and I got one of two filled, so we'll see.
It's a remarkable job, filling.
It's been a busy spring.
I, I'm sure. Consideration to approve the fiscal year 23 prelim budget.
Josh is here to talk about that.
You've been moving along pretty good. I'm trying to slow it down. So the preliminary budget is really just your first kind of shot at budget for fiscal year 22-23. It really is the overall big picture view of finances for the district for next year. This one-page summary really boils down from about 90 pages of 17-digit codes in our office. So as board members, if you've got some, some questions about where things come from after night, make sure you call or email, but I'll kind of go through, starting by fund. What you have on the document there, just to kind of see, try to keep it in kind of same, similar format. The, the top numbers there are the initial budget you'll be approving tonight. The middle number is the last revision of the budget for our current fiscal year. They'll be revised again for June, and they'll do some changes, obviously, in there, and I'll point those out as we go through, fund by fund. And then the bottom is just a summary of changes between the initial fiscal '23 preliminary budget and the current revised fiscal '22 budget. And those are used mainly for if you want to look at or call up discrepancies and why there may be some big changes. And sometimes it's, you know, we have construction in one year and not another, so there's going to be a big variance. So I'll try to work it through as much as, as we can. So slide back up to the top portion, please, and the prelim. I'll go through the general fund first, and that is going to be the majority of what our, our district does. And a few things are, some main considerations that go into the revenue side are the slight increase from Fed, or sorry, the state of Minnesota for, on the formula, and it's a slight 2% increase. That in combination with a little bit smaller anticipated enrollment for the district. We see there's a revenue increase, but maybe not as large as we had, you know, planned on if we'd had all the same number of kids coming to the district. And that's mainly as a result of a, a larger senior class going out than the class coming in for kindergartners. Some other things kind of to note in the revenue side would be, in the general fund, we're talking about everything that goes not only for state and ideas, but our levy. And we just passed a levy, and you'll see, you won't see those funds until the fiscal '24 budget, as those funds are, have been approved by the voters. They won't hit the taxes until the following year. You'll see those in fiscal '24, so those dollars aren't included in this prelim budget. On the expenditure side for general fund, we went through several months ago, prior to going out to vote, reduction going into this preliminary budget for this fiscal year. Some of those things included some reductions in staff, as well as some supply costs and some other various things, including, you know, yard, lawn, yard and lawn maintenance for the district. Those reductions are in here, as well as all contracts that have been settled, those actual amounts are in there, and then reasonable estimates of what contracts that are yet to be solved or yet to be settled are in there. So that's built into that budget as it sits. We had reduced about $300,000, over $300,000 during those reductions. It doesn't quite work out dollar-to-dollar for that, because there are a lot of variables that go into that general fund to get to that target. But you see, based on the preliminary budget, the intent or plan hopefully would be to be about $90,000 ahead at the end of fiscal year '23 in the general fund. The goal for the school, the policy has been to kind of strive right now for that 4% to 6% and on designated, this keeps pushing that needle for in the right direction. Maybe not clearly as fast as we'd like to, but positive is the proper direction for us to be moving. There are a lot of things, or also some other things in expenditures and why you would see maybe not a larger difference there, having made that much of reductions. We have to account for some things in inflation in terms of fuel and utilities for the, for the district. So when we start building budgets for heating the building, cooling the building, electricity and those sorts of things, we increase those dollars a reasonable percentage to make sure that we're hopefully not getting bit too badly at the end of fiscal year, but still being allowed to be responsible with the district funds. If you have any questions on the general fund, because the other one should go a little bit quicker, but if there's some questions you have on that, I can do my best answer. No? Okay. When I go on the next one here, I'll talk a little bit about not only the prelim for '23, but a little bit revised '22. When we do the revision for '22, for the next month in June, for the fiscal year '22, in food service, you'll see large changes in there. And that's because of the federal program allowing to have free and redo, essentially free breakfast and lunch for all the students. We get reimbursed at a much better rate than we do when we charge families for those meals. So there's been more revenue coming into the district. As part of that, they'll be doing a remodel at the elementary and part of that to help make the line move a lot better for the little bodies that are down there, not having to put their trays up like this and having the food service staff reaching over the table to try to get them food. So we're having some benefit of that, to help out in the food service area, as well as some, some coolers that will help there. But you'll see in that revision, there'll be some changes. That also reminds us up to why the dollar amounts in the prelim '23 budget are a little bit higher than maybe normal for food service expense and revenue. This is going under the assumption that we're going to be able to maintain some of that program, at least for a partial year, and receive some of those funds, as well as be able to do some things to keep up with where food service needs to be at in that program. A lot of times, because food service is an area where we don't want to definitely earn, we want to make sure we're breaking even, but we don't want to build such a fund balance in food service that we shouldn't be offsetting some cost to families as they get their meals. So, but because of that, there have been transfers in the past from the general fund to cover food service, and now we're in a position where we can, food service can help out itself a little bit. So we're going to do that while we can. Community service. The reason for the revenue being less in community service for '23 than for '22 is in this budget, we don't have a planned transfer of funds from general fund to a community service to help out. We had done that in the past as an option to help cover some of the cost for essential care working, students end or daycare. It helps out the general fund to not have that transfer. It hurts the community service fund a little bit for that, but we don't have that option to cover those funds either, because we're not offering that free daycare. So we don't have that transfer in there. Food service as a whole in the audit will run at a, a negative balance in their fund balance, and that's something we're working on getting towards, towards a positive. And some of that is going to have to do with some structure that we have based on contracts and where benefits and salaries are paid for, largely because we have preschool on teaching contract, which is where we should have that staff. But preschool is also a community ed program, so we do our best to help that balance out. And now that we are seeing more and more rentals come in and more and more camps and activities and programs being offered for community ed, that will help change as well too. The last two years have been pretty tough on the community ed side. Construction, and this is, it's not in the current revised budget. I did put it in this one, just so there's not an alarm. A construction fund that in our current revised budget is zero and zero for revenue expenditures for fiscal '22, but we have received those funds, and there are going to be some expenses there. I just didn't want you to see a big discrepancy in, in those dollars. So just to kind of explain how those end, we recognize all those dollars, and this year have received those funds in fiscal '22. There won't be a whole lot of expense in fiscal '22. There'll be a big fund balance in construction at the end of fiscal '22, which will carry into fiscal '23. You won't see as much revenue in '23, obviously. We should hopefully see some interest revenue coming in to the district for that fund. You'll see a large part of the expense coming out of construction in fiscal '23, and that's what's built into this preliminary budget. So while there is a difference of $7.8 million in that construction fund for fiscal '23, it's because in fiscal '22, we received that revenue. Debt service is set up through the county and the state to help essentially offset our mortgage payment on the buildings and the debt that we have throughout the district. So if we, it's set to collect at 105%. Our county and our taxpayers are pretty good about having their taxes paid. We usually will see an excess buildup in that of revenue, and when it gets too high, the state just does their adjustments. So as we've kind of gone throughout the years, there's usually been more of a positive adjustment for our taxpayers and vice versa, as those funds go back to help those taxpayers out. But essentially, we don't have a whole lot of control there, other than setting out the bonds, setting out the debt schedules, and then they set out the levy for us. Trust and Agency is our scholarship, and it used to be, we just say just scholarships there, but we've got another fund that's kind of growing in here, especially as we sort of look at facility issues with scoreboard sponsorship. So Trust and Agency is a fund within the district that we can carry over from year to year. So mainly scholarships. It's still about 75, 80% of what goes on in that account, but we'll have scoreboard donations that will come into that account, and then we are using that to either pay off scoreboard or do, generally, improvements are in the activities arena, as those are kind of where those funds would be designated towards. But you'll see, usually it's about $65,000 of revenue that comes in for for scholarships and about seventy-five or eighty thousand that goes out in expenditures. That number will change a little bit, as some scholarship recipients or scholarship donors are going directly to the recipient rather than funneling through the district. It's a little bit cleaner both ways. We don't have to manage the funds and divvy those out, and it's more direct right to the participant. So, that will reduce some of our revenue, but it also reduces some of the expenditure. But you'll see, I believe that there are sixteen panels in total in the high school gym scoreboard that would be sold out essentially for advertising, as well as the ones that we have at the John Birch for football and behind the school for soccer. So, we receive those funds annually for those scoreboards, and we're able to either pay off the scoreboards or do other things for activities. You'll see those go through the trust and agency account. OPEB trust and OPEB debt service. The only reason that they're on there right now is that there still is a fund balance in the OPEB debt service, as that has not been more or less absorbed by the levy yet. So, once that happens, you won't see anything there. There's no expense or no revenue for our district for OPEB, as we've gone from that OPEB bond to now as a pay-as-you-go, and we are able to levy as there's a sunset clause in those contracts. So, once those are able to come off, I'll remove those from the list, which is just one less thing to talk about. But in general, I guess, you know, to kind of go back to the first point, the general fund is the main source of what we do day in and day out in our district. As we see right now with all the things that go into it, we're still looking at having a positive balance at the end of fiscal twenty-three. This is the large range, like if you're way standing back trying to throw a dart at something where we start, but this is where we start each year, and then it gets revised several times throughout the year. If you have any questions on it, I can surely do my best to answer what you have.
Undesignated amount you talked of.
Yep. So, in our, I don't put up the projected audit total on the prelim budget, because it revolves really on too many unknowns to get into that spot. But we'll be looking at fund balance roughly in the general fund of just about that million-dollar mark. And that's made up of undesigned funds, which are used at the discretion of the district and the board. If we need to, whether it be contract settlement or increase-decrease things, it's much more to the discretion of the board. Designated funds are specifically for an item. Long-term facility maintenance has to be used on things that would be under a deferred maintenance type item to help maintain the integrity of the building and structure of the building. And other funds you might have in there would be, you know, reserved for severance or other other benefits and those sorts of things. Generally, what we saw at the end of last audit, we're about fifty-fifty percent. So, you would look at undesigned moving from roughly in that four hundred thousand dollar ballpark to about five hundred thousand roughly. And I guess I wouldn't hold my feet to that right now, is that the projection. We have to go through our fiscal twenty-two audit and clear that all out before we can get to fiscal twenty-three and have a real good idea on that. But we're moving in the proper direction. In terms of the percentage, at the end of last year, that was slightly over three percent. We're striving towards four, actually about three and a half percent. We're striving towards four to six, and as we reach that amount, we'll push it further. Because ours would like to see more of a twelve or higher.
Questions for Mr. Davison? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the prelim budget as stated. Thank you, Bill. Second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Luke. All in favor? Any other discussion, by the way? All in favor of the approval of the prelim twenty-three budget? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with the teacher's master agreement, Article ten, Leaf of Absence, Section ten.
Yes, this is for Karen Krego Fall. I recommend approval.
Make the motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion?
A second.
Katie on the second? Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve Superintendent Sampson to process change orders on the building bond project on behalf of the district as defined in the Cannon Falls Cost Approval Authorization.
In your packet, you'll find this document that outlines basically giving me some authority and the project oversight authority to help process change orders that may come up during the construction process. I'm asking for the approval for me to approve any change orders that are valued at twenty-five thousand dollars or less to be signed off on by myself. Any changes recommended in between twenty-five and fifty thousand will be brought to the project oversight committee, so we would have a documented meeting with a three-day notice to approve that. And then any changes in recommended, or any recommended changes in excess of fifty thousand dollars will still be brought to the school board for approval. Most of the change orders will be under twenty-five thousand dollars. There might be one, possibly two. Dave, would you say, from what you've seen, are very rare? It would be even between twenty-five and fifty?
Yeah. With the scope work we're having done, it would be very rare, could probably be over that twenty-five thousand.
And I'd second that, too. Kraus Anderson made it pretty clear that it's pretty rare for it to be at that amount or higher. So, I feel comfortable with this approval process.
Did you make a motion as such?
Yeah, I will make the motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Luke on the motion? Rebecca on the second?
Is this pretty standard procedure of how it works for these kinds of things?
Yeah. If not, we need to have a special board meeting every time we have a change order.
Yeah.
So.
And it was mostly just to try to keep the process going, and we'll still meet on it with that committee, but.
And if it's large, we'll.
We'll be meeting almost weekly or biweekly.
Okay.
Once the project gets really up and running.
Okay.
So. Anyone else?
Well, there's some, there was previous discussion around the shop area and kind of looking at that and how that gets drawn out, so. Has there been any further commentary around that?
We've had user group meetings. So, the architect and the users in that group of the CTE area have met, along with the principal and sometimes myself and Dave. And everything's on track right now. I think we've worked out a lot of the kinks that were initially there.
Yeah. In our last meeting, we got to see some of that, what that'll look like. It's pretty early stages. It's not pretty pictures by any means, but kind of saw the layout of what it will look like, what it could look like.
And obviously, I think next week is the budget being applied to what we have preliminarily designed. So, we'll see how that goes.
I think last meeting definitely gave us a good direction on which way we're going with that area.
All good? So, we have a motion, the second. We've had discussion, all in favor of the superintendent approval up to twenty-five K. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve an RFP for roof repairs up to four hundred K.
The CCC roofs, they had a pre-bid meeting, as we talked about earlier in the meeting last Friday, and I believe the bids are due on the twenty-fifth. That does sound correct. With that meeting taking place after this meeting, our next meeting isn't until June twenty-seventh. So, I'm asking the board to allow, give us preliminary approval for up to four hundred thousand dollars. The number in the in the board packet is for materials and does not include labor and stuff that's on top of the roof. Give me the term for that, Dave.
All of our RTUs and rooftop units and the gambles.
To work around them, right? Yeah. And so, we felt it would be about another fifty thousand dollars on top of this quote for that, and that's why there is a four hundred thousand dollar ask. Anything above four hundred thousand dollars, we would do a complete stop and then come back to the board. Probably have to have a special board meeting to talk it through. But again, we're kind of in that age of, we're hoping the bid's coming good at this point, depending on where companies are at with materials and labor, so.
Well, I think Kraus Anderson was pretty comfortable with that, too, as we discussed it in our meeting. So, I think it's a, I think we'll be okay.
Yeah. Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rebecca. Further discussion? All in favor of the approval for repairs up to four hundred K. Sounds right?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the John Birch Park user agreement from August one to July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
This has somehow slipped from us the last year or two, and so Neil and I met to update along with a couple of other people. The agreement, and I believe the red line changes are in this version. They were in this version. This is the final version. Basically, there isn't a whole lot of change, other than increase in the one-time fee from a thousand dollars to twenty-five hundred because of the cost of grass seed and fertilizer going in there. We did put a catastrophic event piece in there. If we had a really wet season and the football, the football, the baseball field, that is, the football field needs to be looked at, we would have a meeting jointly with the city to look at that. The encouraging piece of this is that the city kind of recognizes that we do need to have an agreement also for the tennis courts. And so, Neil is starting to work on that agreement as well, and so we will be bringing that at some point here in the near future.
It's your pleasure, group.
Just a logistical question. I'm just curious with the, some of the provisions where we, you know, we'll clean the restrooms after events, like is that our maintenance staff doing that, or is this volunteer? Like, how does that? Some of the labor pieces here where we agree to, what is that?
We have set it up to where we would need to use that provision.
Okay.
We have porta-potties down there in the fall, and mainly we use it into the freezing season and then coming out of the freezing season. If our coaches, like, for example, in the springtime wish to use it, then that is on them to clean it.
Okay.
And then we do hallway trash after football games, Dave?
Yep.
And then that's mainly it. Or is there something in the springtime, too, with baseball? I think the coaches take care of.
The coaches typically did it for baseball, and boosters did it for a while for football, and then it's evolved into the custodians and boosters both kinds of.
Right. And Josh, I don't know if you can answer this off the tip of your mind, but we haven't seen a charge for cleaning or anything like that.
Well, not particularly.
There's been a good relationship that way.
So, where's the city, um, seeing this? Have they interviewed it in the group?
They are, I believe their park board has. I believe, don't hold me to that. But I want to say, Neil's been asking, he asked me when our board meeting was, so that he could take it to his city council meeting, which I think is tomorrow night, which may be too late to obviously get on the agenda. So, it might hold off another month until we have to meet here in two weeks, but whoever I'm.
So, Jeff, are you saying we need to agree to this before it goes to the city council?
Yep.
The only question I had was the mowing. I see that struck here from this. I mean, I think that's, at least I think it is, it's in purple. I don't know. City will mow the field twice per week? That's been crossed off in mine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you just must have, oh, I'm just looking at the online.
I just think that's something that's been done forever, and I just, I guess I was wondering why it would be different. Red. Red, it's purple.
Purple.
And there's a couple other purples later on.
Does it mean that they'll, it's the twice per week it's gone, but it'll mow the field at the discretion of public works?
Right.
So, like when, as, as.
Whenever they feel necessary. And they don't, they don't charge us for the mowing.
Right.
So.
So, maybe they're just like getting.
They did have in there that the master schedule for the John Birch will be maintained by the athletic director of the district. That was news to read and to myself, so we thought we'd change that. So.
And I would say, when they came into the facilities meeting, when this first started, they were very generous. They were, they were looking to charge us more for any unnecessary reasons. The fertilizer and grass seed basically doubled, and they wanted a little assistance with that, which the football team and the baseball team are the biggest users of needing more grass seed, basically.
City's been very good to work with in this process, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the John Birch Park user agreement.
Motion by Katie.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor of the user agreement for the upcoming year? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the revised Model six fourteen policy, school district texting plan and procedure.
There's not a whole lot of updating to this policy. It seems more technical near the end in the red line version of it, of coordinating the, getting the right statute numbers in there, I think. Won't change anything really procedurally here.
No, it doesn't.
We'll put a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion?
So, it goes down as a revision, basically due to the red line?
Yeah, the red line changes.
Which is nothing.
It's just like some statutes.
It's adding the Pearson Access Net as a resource.
Some of the links.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor of the approval of the revised Model six fourteen policy? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a change in the Ed Foundation bylaws regarding the number of board members from the current language of eighteen to twenty-four board members and to ten to fifteen board members.
This is something that the Ed Foundation wants us to consider, and obviously, if Brenda was here, she'd be able to talk more about this, but I think this is a sign of the times more recently of, it's kind of hard to find board members now, and so they're considering passing in July at their organizational meeting of changing that and wanting to get our input and a blessing, if you will, to change it from the listed amount to the new amount of ten to fifteen board members.
I think they felt compelled as well to just update their bylaws, which haven't been possibly updated since day one. So, it was kind of a procedural thing, and as Jeff said, it's difficult to have, to get people to be on a board these days, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Katie on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Piggybacking on that, consideration to approve Maggie Wilson and Megan Bauer as the new Ed Foundation board members.
This is as it's read.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Second on Rebecca. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished for this evening. Informational items, as you can see, upcoming for our next meeting, which is a month from now. Just a reminder, we have, we have monthly meetings during the summer, just to revisit that.
We will be back in the board meeting, or in the board, in the board room for our next meeting and moving forward unless we have issues with COVID, so.
Okay. If anyone has any issues they'd like brought forth before the general board, please contact Jeff or Lori, and we'll see that we can get it on there if it's. contact Jeff or Lori, and we'll see that we can get it on there if it's appropriate to put on the agenda. Having said that, we are finished for the evening, a very busy evening. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Rebecca on the motion? Katie on the second? Other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, we are adjourned.